Good evening, welcome to the February 24th, 2015 Redding School Committee meeting. We'll start with public input. Seeing no...I checked. Seeing none. Dr. Norrie, would it be okay if we took some agenda items out of order? We'll wait on reports and we'll get started right away with our [inaudible].
I would actually have Mr. Barker do the honors.
Welcome, Mr. Barker.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. I'm pleased to share with you an exciting opportunity that we've piloted at the high school this year called Rocket's Help Desk. And thanks to the creativity and enthusiasm of our history teacher, Mrs. Carrie Gallagher, and her students Megan Catalano, Julia Donahue, Emily Fusco, who couldn't join us this evening, and Melanie Lee, the Rocket's Help Desk has helped to create a student-centered, project-based learning opportunity that is improving students' and teachers' experiences using technology. In this year's pilot program, Mrs. Gallagher has used her duty period and offered her lunch to assist her student leaders, who also have often given up their lunches and their study halls, in order to develop a series of multimedia tutorials which empower students and teachers to better utilize technology at classrooms at RMHS. And also at, was it Birch Meadow, I believe, at the 5th grade classroom?
Barrows.
Oh, it was at Barrows.
Yep.
Excuse me. They have also presented in a number of conferences and trainings to illustrate the possibilities of student-led tech teams. And in fact, recently, their work was even recognized by two online publications, The Journal and Edutopia. And then I think Ms. Gallagher will share with you, she just received an email from Stanford University, I'll let her talk more about that. So, some really excellent accolades have been thrown their way. This evening, Mrs. Gallagher and two of her students, Megan and Julia, will share with you some of this exciting work. Ms. Gallagher.
Welcome.
Hi. So, I'm Carrie Gallagher. And Julia and Megan. So, the girls and I put this presentation together for you. Just to introduce you to Rocket's Help Desk, our website looks like this and was recently redesigned by Megan. And so you can see all...
Sorry.
Hi.
Nice way to walk in.
You can see all of the work that the students have been doing. Every post that's there is a student-produced post. Every piece of media is, was produced by them. Sometimes it's through connections that I've made for them, sometimes it's through interest from teachers in our building, and sometimes it's their idea and their idea alone because they're really passionate about a tool and they think that more teachers and students in our school and in our district should know about it. So, a couple of examples, there's most recently a tech integration profile of the principal of engineering class and their class blog and how they use the class blog to document their learning. A tutorial of Socratic, which is a great formative assessment tool that we use in the classroom quite a bit. And the girls are going to talk about a lot more and show you some examples of their work. Oops. So, our mission, which Mr. Barker kind of covered with you, is to allow students to use their own curiosity and motivation to direct their learning and do research on the tools, test the tools, and then report out on the tools to teachers. They also work very hard to network with real ed tech professionals and entrepreneurs. They're going to talk about that networking tonight. And it's really a team effort, so I'm not really there to tell them what to do, I'm there to offer advice and guidance if they need it, but they really run the show. And in order to accomplish this mission, as has been mentioned, they create screentap, screencast tutorials, we do classroom visits, like our classroom visit into the 5th grade classroom at Barrows. And also, we do in-person consultation with teachers who are looking for solutions. We have one scheduled for tomorrow with a math teacher. And they'll talk about a couple of other examples that we've done already. And also networking with other technology specialists, students from other schools, ed tech professionals, going to conferences. So there's lots of different aspects to it.
Okay. So, one of the major things we do in Rocket's Help Desk is create screencast tutorials for different apps, whether it's through recommendation from other teachers or things that we decided to do ourselves. So screencasting is when we record the computer screen so that people can see what we're doing and hear our voice as we do it. So I'm going to show you part of one. This is a Prezi demo that I made. And Prezi allows you to make different presentations, so this will take you through the steps on how to do it. Hi, this is Megan with Rocket's Help Desk. Today, we're going to be learning how to use Prezi. Prezi allows you to make presentations like a PowerPoint presentation. It can be accessed on an online browser or downloaded as an app. So I'm just going to go ahead and log in. Once you're logged into Prezi, you can see all your projects. If you want to edit one, just hover over it and you can click Edit. When you open up your project, it shows you an overview of your slide. You can then move to your different slides on the left by clicking on the different You can click the plus button to add a slide, and then you can drag it around to decide where you want it. If you want to get rid of one, you can just hit Delete. By clicking the little house on the slide, you can go back to the overview of your project. Prezi also lets you customize your project. You can choose a background image or choose a theme, which changes the colors of your I like this one. To change the title of your presentation, click on here and then you can type it in. I'm going to add an exclamation point. If you don't like the layout of your presentation, you can click Edit Path in the bottom-left corner, which allows you to drag around your different slides. Ooh, so fun. To edit the different slides, click on the left on which one you want to edit. You can then add a title. And you can add an image and add text. You can even, if you click Insert at the top, you can insert symbols and shapes, a YouTube video, and much more. Prezi automatically saves your work, which is great. Prezi also allows you to work on your presentation at the same time as other people working on your presentation. Which is similar to the way Google Docs allows you to work on the document at the same time as other people. Once you're done, just click this little arrow and it'll let you share it or download it. Once you're done, you can present it or just click through all the slides. Just make sure that you log in when you're done. Now you're all set to make your own Prezi presentations.
So that one was requested by a science teacher, and it was used so that she didn't have to teach her students how to use Prezi, she could just teach them the science, and then they could watch the video and make the presentations.
Another important element to Rocket's Help Desk that we've really only got to experience once was what Mr. Barker had mentioned before. We went to Barrows and visited Ms. Becker's classroom, and this is just a video of us showing what we did with some dramatic music.
Oh my God, that was great.
It's very easy to make, easier than it looks.
Just had a skate.
Just had a skate.
So what we did there was we went to this elementary school classroom and we showed them how to use Google Forms. It's like an in-person tutorial, and it's really nice. Two weeks ago in my English class, we were sharing something on a service called Voice Thread, but everyone shared it around on Edline, so my English teacher had me show them in real time how to do that. And it's more a personal thing than just the screencast, which is also nice.
Okay. Another thing we do is networking. Now, this involves different things. One thing we do is Google Hangouts, which is, it records our video chat that we have with other people. We do these with people who we meet in person or people who we wanted, who've reached out to us. We did one with, this is the one with Swarup Raju, he's the creator of EduCannon. We've also done one with Rayshawn Richards, who is the creator of Explain Everything. And we met him at MasQ. Now, this picture is extremely hard to see, and I apologize, but this is a picture of us at MasQ, which was held at Gillette Stadium, which is a place where we presented, which is another form of networking that we do. We presented to Expanding the Boundaries and Blue Ribbon and some other things. So I'll show you part of the Google Hangout with Swarup.
Hi, this is Julia with Rocket's Help Desk. And this is Megan.
Hello.
And today, we're interviewing Swarup Raju, who is the creator of EduCannon. EduCannon this year was listed as one of the top 10 apps by EdSearch, and Shabru, I'm going to talk to him. Thanks for...
Happy to be here.
Okay. So, can you tell us a little bit about your background before EduCannon?
Yeah, sure. I can tell you a little bit about how the company got started too with that, how I fit into the picture. So Ben, my co-founder, was actually a teacher, and he came up with the idea for EduCannon while he was in the classroom. He was using video with the students, he wanted a way to engage them more, make sure that they were paying attention to the content of the video, so he made the first prototype. And you'll find that with a lot of tech tools, that it's really teachers that are coming up with the first ideas for the products, because it's teachers that really understand the pain points in the classroom. And I went to college with Ben, and in my roles before EduCannon, I was mostly focused on the marketing side of things. I worked at Kaiser doing this, Kaiser Permanente, it's a large healthcare system out here, and also startups, working on ways to find users, activate them towards products. And that's really my role at EduCannon. I'm the guy that's out trying to find new users for our platform and finding ways to make our product great for them.
So I know you talked about your friend Ben and education, but how has it personally affected you? Are there any really good teachers you've had that have invited you or anything like that?
Yeah, and I think that, for me, it's the impact that online video has. So I learn best through video. I'm the kind of guy that needs to pause material, rewind it, review it before I can really grasp the material. And that's what really excited me about EduCannon, because with EduCannon comes all the possibility of all the great aspects of online video. You can always pause or wind a video, but there's also increased engagement that we can add into video, increase questions, and make sure that the teacher is, really understands where I'm at in the material.
In your opinion, how...
Okay. So that's a little bit of that, so you can get the feel for what it is. Oh, no, we're already there, okay, good.
Yeah, so we also did a Google Hangout with Andrew Marsinek, who we will be presenting with at Blue Ribbon. And we like presenting places because we get to meet people. We presented at MasQ, which is where this picture is from, on that rainy day. But that's where we met Rayshawn Richards, which was really nice, because he, we got to meet the person who created the app and learn about it from him, which was a really unique experience. So yeah, networking is an enjoyable part of Rocket's Help Desk.
Something that just happened today is, there's a math teacher from Eaton who asked us to produce a tutorial on Haikudek, which is another app, a presentation app. And so I took a picture of Emily Fusco, who's the one producing this tutorial today, while she was actually recording the tutorial, and I tweeted it out, and I tagged Haikudek in the tweet, and they responded. And so I'm trying to set up another Google Hangout with one of the CTO of Haikudek. So a lot of times, the way we end up connected with these people is just through our own sharing and communication online with the ed tech community. So that's another kind of project that's coming up right now.
Another aspect of what we do, which kind of fits into all three of the categories that Ms. Gallagher mentioned earlier, is in-person consultations. What this is, as a teacher or even a student, what we've had so far is two teachers, one who will be tomorrow, and a nurse came for an in-person consultation. What we do is they can ask us to question about anything. Or in this blog post that I made, Mr. McSweeney, one of the English teachers at Redding High School, is asking for some advice on how to build this project for his students. What he did was, he wanted to make a blog, but he didn't know, should I make everyone make a blog, or should I have one blog? What should I do for that? So we gave him advice on that, and it gives them just choices, rather than telling them, this is what you should do. And the nurse also came in, just to see how you could share on Google Doc. So it's like an in-person, it's like a tutorial, but it's more personal, and it's more personal in a classroom setting as well.
Okay, this is me. So we're really excited that this year, the girls volunteered their time, they spend a lot of time with me, purely of their own accord because of their own interest in technology and researching and wanting to try, you know, as much as they can and share their ideas with other people. And it was something I was passionate about. But we're excited that next year, Rocket's Help Desk is going to be offered as an elective for credit. So all of our efforts have paid off, we're very happy. We also have submitted an RAF grant proposal so that we can acquire some of our own equipment. Right now, we're kind of borrowing from everywhere in order to produce these tutorials. So hopefully, we'll be awarded that, that would be fantastic. And we're planning to present at the Blue Ribbon Conference here in April with Andrew Marsinek, who actually has worked in three different districts in Massachusetts to build student tech team models. And so he's kind of an expert in the field. He's actually authoring a book right now that should be published by the end of the year on the student tech team, so he's like an expert on this. But our Help Desk is definitely unique as compared to the ones he's worked on, because all of his have been produced in one-to-one districts, and ours is a BYOD district. So we have, we have our own little niche that we're establishing our own little expertise in, and we're looking forward to continue to build it and share it with other people. And, oh, yes, we put all the effort into this slide, I almost forgot. So that's our blog URL that I showed you at the beginning. That's the URL to our YouTube channel, so you can see all our video tutorials and our interviews with experts that we've done so far, and we continue to post there all the time. And I'm on Twitter, you can follow us at the Rocket's Help Desk. And if you'd like to submit a request, you can email us at rocketsheltdesk@gmail.com. We all have the password, so any of us can respond to it. Like I said, it's not just about me, it's a collaborative effort. And if you don't want to write all that down and you have a QR scanner, you can just scan the code, and it'll pop up on your, on your phone, and you'll be all set. So, and that's, that's it.
Ms. Gallagher, you want to mention the Stanford story you shared with us coming out?
So 10 minutes before I got in my car to get here, I got an email, and Stanford University is flying me out there in March for two days to be on a panel at their Personal Learning Symposium. And I've never even been to California, and I'm so excited, and I hope I can get the days off to go.
[laughing]
So, yeah, they found me through some of the articles I've written for EdSearch, and I feel very fortunate, so I'm excited. Should be fun. Thank you.
We're more old-fashioned, so we're kind of taught that we're not supposed to lose our phones or...
Please... I know, I know. And my, my daughter comes home and she's so excited about being in your class, and she mentioned this course, could you all read?
Well, hopefully, she'll take it. I would love to have her.
What's great is they really are kind of, I think, disarming the adults who do share that same experience, teachers included, administrators included. I'm certainly on the list of people needing help trying to find time in their busy schedule. But I mean, they really do exemplify that authentic learning, as you can see. I mean, there's a true product, and you're talking about the communication skills, you're talking about presentation skills, problem solving. And what's amazing to me is, you know, through the hard work of the kids and the teacher, you're talking about volunteering time. So with a course, and with really more investment behind this, I think, I think the, it's really a limitless opportunity, so.
Could I ask a few questions? And then I'll open up. Okay. I didn't catch what year you guys were in.
I'm a junior.
And I'm a sophomore.
Thank you. First, a technical question. The video that you produced, the slide switching was on beat with the music. What software were you using?
You made that. Yeah, I filmed that while they were working. And I just use iMovie.
Okay. The transitions were great, they were right on the, you know, I was like, oh, that's really hard to do, a lot of people that create videos.
It was, iMovie's really easy. We should do a tutorial on iMovie.
Other questions from the committee, comments? Dr. Doxson?
I just, I want to gush, I'm sorry. I think this is just so wonderful. I remembered your presentation about the history class, the paperless history classes last year, and how you engaged the students and you were spreading the word in the schools. And I'm just really struck by how authentic it is. It's truly needed in our schools, and by me, so please come over. Actually, I'll go over your spot.
So that's an email.
I'm wondering, I'm hoping there's a tutorial on Twitter, because I...
Not yet, but we can do that.
I'll put my hand up for that. But I just think that what you're doing is such real learning while you're also helping adults learn. And so there's mutual learning going on. And at the same time, in a, in a district that struggles with its budget, you're filling a much-needed hole. We don't have the money for more technology specialists. And you are there for us all, and the students, so that new things can be tried. Teachers don't have to, I mean, they always have to stick their necks out, and I appreciate that so much. But they have someone there to help them when they have an idea or want to try something new. And I just think that is just an ideal that I hope, I know our schools strive for, and I just want to thank you for putting, I can only imagine how much extra time it takes from all of you. So thank you. And I'm thrilled to be part of a school system that supports this and looks for this.
Mrs. Brodsky?
Thank you. I'm going to gush too. I'll be shorter, but I'll gush as well, because I agree completely. My kiddos are younger, and every time I get to hear a presentation like this, I just get excited that they're, that they get to have this. So just, that was fantastic, and it was very inspiring. But I do have a question for the students. When you do this kind of learning, you get to do so many different things, right? You're presenting, you're researching, you're creating content, you're also teaching and helping people. Were there any components of all of those things that particularly inspired you, that you found the most rewarding, of all the different things you're doing? Was there one piece that really made you feel like, this is what I really love?
I'd have to say it's the teaching other people about it, because one of my teachers along the years said that the easiest way to learn something is to teach it to someone else, and by doing that, I'm learning a lot. And I really liked working with those elementary schoolers.
I agree completely, that was the best part of this, being able to teach other people.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reddick?
I just have a question about maybe what sort of the strategy or the focus might be for the class next year in terms of teaching other people? Any idea about whether that's going to focus on, you know, here at the high school, or you're going to try to really set some goal of like a certain number of outreach or outreach at, like, all of the elementary schools? And I guess it might, maybe it depends on what you get for enrollment in the class, but certainly the elementary outreach sounds great. But I'm sure the people here at the high school that you're helping are equally as excited about the learning that they receive too, so. Just don't know if you had any goals sort of set for that?
I don't think I have any hard goals that I, one of the things that is an important part of this is that we're not forcing anyone to do anything. It's based on interest and request. We, I think next year, one of my goals is to, and you guys can let me know if you agree, is to get the word out more about that we're available. I think we've been successful at that at the high school, but I'd like to get it out more district-wide about that we're, we want to help, we want to come in, we want to problem solve with students and teachers throughout the district. You know, because this year, it was all volunteer time, our time was limited. Next year, with it being a full elective and like a part of my day-to-day job, I'll be able to dedicate more time to strategizing how to do that. And the, the great thing about working, partnering with students is that they, they come up with better ideas than I do when it's, when it's, when we're talking about getting other kids to buy in. So, yeah, I think that's definitely part of our mission for next year, is to reach out to other schools. I've, I've spoken with some teachers and educators at the middle school level who are interested in trying to build this model into, into the middle schools, but you know, that's kind of long-term, and I definitely want to make sure that the students are a part of that, and hopefully, we'll be working toward that over the next couple of years.
Maybe there'll be some opportunity down the road, you guys are seniors, you know, like sort of more a senior project, where you could take on sort of leadership of that middle school team, you know? So there's maybe some opportunities to continue this, you know, both as a class and then individually, in that sort of independent study mode. But leverage that to, to spread this to the, I was thinking particularly the middle schools, where then you could bring another team up to be engaged and sort of be a feeder for your high school process.
Yeah. I should mention, we have quite a few, because it's all volunteer time and it just, it, it happens that it fits into these, these girls' schedules, there were a lot of students who were interested and couldn't fit into their schedules because of the way the pilot was structured. So we have lots of like honorary Help Desk people who like come to MasQ with us, and I have a field trip going to the Navisight Data Center in Andover on Friday, and Parker's coming with us, and several other of my students who are definitely interested in tech integration and wish they could be a part of this. So because it's been a pilot, we've been really flexible, and we've been able to work people in. But these two stick with me like day in and day out, so they're my, they're like my founding members.
Asher, one other quick...
Really? Yes.
I'm just thinking, so you just, I know you're planning it for next year, so I know a lot of kids have, you know, really tight-packed schedules, no studies. So one of the things is when they, you have a half semester class, you can't run it opposite gym because it's every day, but, so I don't know if there's different models that you think about for these kinds of classes, where you say, can you set it up also as a model that could run opposite of PE? Sorry, I said gym. I took gym here. Seriously, I took gym here. But, PE, run it opposite PE. And, so anyway, I just, I can't imagine the scheduling nightmare, but...
We actually were just talking about which period would it fit, you know, best in, in terms of the need, in terms of availability. And that'll be something, as the scheduling process goes along, that we'll work with Joe Kane, our scheduling guru, and try and find the way to best appeal the kids, based on their availability.
Sometimes all kids have is that opposite PE.
It's a good thing the school committee doesn't control class schedules. We look forward to it.
Yeah.
If you'd like to help, invite Jen.
Yeah, very, very impressive. And I've used some of the technology you've talked about too, and excited to see it being used in classrooms as well. Has anybody used any of this technology to flip their classroom yet, or is any interest in that so far?
To what?
Well, flip the classroom would be using like a Prezi or Khan Academy type of thing, so you'd go home and have a lecture at home, then you come back to class and actually discuss and sort of work individually. I guess that's how it's best described.
Yeah. There are a couple of teachers who are doing that independent of this, but yeah, this would be a great vehicle to, I think, the challenge is always, you know, sharing the practice with one another. That limited amount of PD time or PLC time, that we're trying to find some consistent opportunities. This would be a vehicle where, you know, you hear an idea in a classroom, and this might be a student group that can share that, share that wealth, that intellectual wealth.
I can tell you that one of the, one of my colleagues in my department, Gary Dentremont, has flipped whole units successfully with his students, and he's done a fantastic job. I actually observed some of his teaching during that unit last year and wrote a blog post about it on my own blog, not this one, and shared some of his really awesome work. Also, the, the interview that you saw that the girls did with Swarup Raju, that particular app, it's actually, it's actually web-based, it's not an iPad app, allows you to take YouTube videos or Vimeo videos or videos from any source really. When you put them into EduCannon, it adds you to insert questions. So as students watch the videos, it automatically pauses the video and a question pops up, and they answer it, and it tells them immediately whether they've gotten it right or wrong and why. And then the teacher gets the feedback live as they're watching the videos as to which questions they're getting right or wrong. And because of the connection we made with him, he was, he reached out to me and said that I'd love to do a one-on-one video chat with any of the teachers in your district who are interested in learning more about the tool, and I would give them a free full subscription, which is normally quite expensive, to our tool. And I've had a couple of teachers take me up on that, and so they're starting to work toward it. And that just has happened within the last month or so. So yeah, there's definitely interest in that particular model, but most of the teachers I know, when they flip, they flip here and there, not 100% of the time, of course.
Right, yeah. One is appropriate.
Yeah, so yeah, there's definitely flipping.
Great, that's good to know.
Lots of flipping going on.
I would be interested in perhaps some Gary Dentremont, or whomever's doing it, to come in and explain it to the school committee and the public in general to see, because it's exciting approach to teaching and, you know, really solid use of technology, a valuable use of technology, other than sometimes it's sort of forced into classrooms, whereas in this case, it's ideal for learning, so. Dr. Doxson?
I'm just wondering if I can ask this...
I'm just wondering if I can ask the students, um, if you could talk a little bit about some ways that this might have impacted what it feels like to be a student here at the high school and in the district. I just think, I'm just wondering because there's the role of the student where the student is always the recipient of the knowledge versus you've sort of flipped that. And, um, I'm just wondering if that has impacted how you feel about your high school experience?
When we had our meeting with Dr. Doherty and Mr. Rocker about suggesting this as a class, one of the things that I really advocated for, which exists in the PLTW classes, if any of you know what those are, they're Project Lead the Way, which are these science classes that are very independent and cool and I took one last year. But this is cool because it's completely, it's independent. You're there, you exist, you matter. But Megan and I really get to like make our own choices and it's really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, even in the planning stages, I would say, you know, the students are definitely, you guys are both at the center of the call and the shots, which is, is very refreshing to be honest with you. I think you guys were surprised by that, but Ms. Gallagher certainly creates that and the students take full advantage of it, which is great.
And also, um, nope, forgot what I was gonna say.
I did a project freshman year in Prezi and I had no clue what I was doing, so I wish I had this then. But I really like that students are doing this at the high school. Like if I saw like Megan did like a video and I had another question to ask her, like I think that's really nice that there's a student that's really like an expert in it that I could go to.
Well, listen, thank you very much. We don't usually keep our guests this long. They're really exciting topics, so thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you again.
Good luck at Stanford.
Oh, thank you.
Put in a good word for our students at Stanford. It's a tough one to crack.
Okay, that was an excellent way to start the meeting. Uh, we'll go into our standard reports this evening, which I'm sure are gonna be just as exciting. So, students first?
All right. Yeah, I'll go. All right, so, um, RMHS right now, it seems like everything's kinda coming to a calm. You know, it looks like we're gonna have our first full week of school in about a month and a half. Um, spring, um, excuse me, winter sports are ending, so like the field house was very calm after school today, unusual. Um, yeah, so we've kinda been thrown off by like the six snow days, so I think we're starting, finally starting to get back into it. Um, I haven't been here since real world problem solving, so I'll give a little report on that. Um, the juniors, we participated in during the midterm week in January. We were split up to groups of eight and we were given problems, um, we were given the, the, uh, yeah, the problems were how to reduce plate waste at RMHS, um, how you would, how much it would cost, how would you install a green roof here, um, water conservation in Reading, how you would achieve that, and how you'd advertise Reading online, um, make it sound appealing, which it is, to people wanting to move here. Um, it was groups of eight, um, usually four boys, four girls. I thought it was a great experience. We, everyone, um, uh, displayed, presented to a panel of experts. Um, not, I've never done anything like it in, you know, the eleven or twelve years I've been in Reading School, so I just think it was, it was like something that I feel like when, once we leave RMHS, something will be doing more of, so really preparing us. That's what I liked.
Thank you.
Um, so this Friday night from five thirty to nine o'clock is mini golf. It will be throughout the hallways of the high school and it's benefiting a lot of the clubs, especially the coral department at the high school. So it should be a good time. That's five thirty to nine. And also, next week is the school's dodgeball tournament. Um, this is a really fun event. I went last year, I'll be going this year. And a bunch of, uh, clubs and gr, just groups in general at the high school go in the field house and it's a little scary, but it's a lot of fun. So that'll be next week. And the weekend of the sixth, seventh, and eighth, uh, the Drama Club will be putting on the production of Antigone, so you should be there. I'm sure it's gonna be great.
Thank you. Other reports from committee members? Mrs. Webber?
Maybe this isn't gonna be allowed, but the, um, swim team was at, um, State this past weekend and they came in fifteenth. And, um, wrestling was at, um, State's and I know Adam Morton finished first place at one fifty-twos and he goes on to All States and there may be a couple of other of the wrestlers that also go on to All States, but he was our champion at one fifty-two. So, exciting. And there may have been other events that other people know about, but that was at least Saturday and Sunday.
I'm gonna go next. Uh, last night we had a, we had town meeting, uh, at the Performing Arts Center. We did and we were all present and it, uh, it was a nice evening. The first thing I noticed when I got in my car was not only the cold, but, uh, the excellent job that we've done with sidewalks around the high school, uh, clearing areas, and I'm sure the students appreciated that when they returned back to school, uh, this week. So thank you very much, Dr. Doherty and, and to your staff, uh, and to the town as a whole. Uh, town meeting was really successful. Last night we discussed modular classrooms, um, and our needs there. Uh, there was excellent debate all around. I thought it was really healthy discussion. Um, I, I was, you know, corny as it may sound, but I was kinda proud to be in Reading last night. I thought that the conversation was cordial, um, and professional and, uh, I, I guess it's easy to say that because the outcome was what we had hoped for. Uh, but again, I, I appreciate all of Reading's town meeting members and the families that showed up last night. Um, and obviously you can tell that the modular classroom, uh, project was approved by, by town meeting. Uh, we'll be talking about that later on in tonight's meeting. No other?
Just wanna comment that I thought you in particular did a, John did a great job, but I really thought you handled yourself and the school committee extremely well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
It was easy. Uh, reports from administration this evening?
I, I actually have quite a few, so, so dig in. And I'll, I'll start with the snow removal.
Okay, great.
Um, so starting with Juneau, so all these, uh, winter blizzards have had names. I don't know if you've been following the names. We've had Juneau, Carrie, Linus, Marcus, Neptune, Octavia, and most recently this past weekend, Pandora. Um, I think we're closing in on the record for snow. So, um, our snow removal efforts here at the high school and in the district began immediately after Juneau, which was the blizzard back on January twenty-eighth. Kelly Cologne, our director of facilities, has had, uh, multiple discussions with Chief Burns and also an engineer that we, a structural engineer that we've used from time to time in the district to help identify critical areas on our rooftops that we should be mindful of and, and be checking. Um, the department has been diligent in monitoring and removing snow from the rooftops in the district, paying close attention to the most critical areas and all the buildings in the district. Um, those areas include the large flat roofs, any transitions and drifting areas, um, and also where our rooftop equipment is. We wanna be able to have access to it and make sure that we're maintaining it and it's still in good working order. Um, they continue to monitor daily all of the structures in the buil, uh, in the district. Um, those efforts have included building walks, checking both internal and externally for any signs of damage or structural stress. Um, a particular areas to investigate have included like the north-facing elevation where the changes and the drifting has occurred. Um, and as you know, with the wind that we've had, even though they've removed snow, the drifts are there again the next day when they come in. During the last two weeks, our staff in conjunction with external roofing contractors and other external vendor, vendors have, um, reviewed the areas and have systematically removed snow from a number of, uh, from a number of the buildings in the district. Most recently, we worked on, um, this past week while school was out, we, uh, worked on the high school gym, kilim, and I believe the crew went to Barrows one day. Each and every school in the district has been treated for snow removal, either from the roof or from the ground with roof rakes. Um, we have seen drifts that have reaccumulated in those high-risk areas and we've gone back and removed them again. Um, I, I say all this because we've had a number of phone calls and inquiries from parents and I want to assure them that we are managing this on a daily basis and, and very mindful of, of the safety of not only our students, but our staff and, and, and the building, uh, the district. So, so that's my snow removal update.
May I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Um, a number of years ago, we were concerned with Wood End. That was the first time we had, the committee had really discussed roofs and safety and, and snow. Uh, has Wood End presented any challenges this year or, or because of your efforts, we've just been on top of it?
We've been on top of it. We did, um, we did rent and you may have seen it, um, a large like lift crane that was here at the high school to help us get on areas.
Oh, that's what it was for.
Yeah, that was to help us to get on the roof here at the high school and then we had it moved from here by the company that we rented it from to Wood End to help us access the, the hotspots on Wood End.
Excellent, thank you.
So, we have looked at it, thank you.
Mr. Knight?
Yeah, just the cost associated with that, how do we bear that? Is that something that we're gonna have to?
Um, a lot of the, uh, so, a lot of the cost, uh, we've used a lot of our internal resources. So we have had, we have incurred some overtime expense because we did have, um, a weekend where we had mandatory overtime for our custodial staff. That was immediately after Juneau because we knew it was the first of many storms. Not that we could have predicted, you know, Linus and Carrie and Neptune and all of them, but we knew that it was early in the winter. So we did have overtime expenditures. Um, we are reviewing the budget to make sure that we're, we're okay. And, um, we did have a, a crew that, uh, helped us from the Department of Corrections, which was, uh, essentially free labor. Um, they were here during school vacation week and, uh, and they sent a crew, um, for four days and they helped, uh, helped excavate, uh, a number of the rooftops here, um, which was-
So FEMA did actually reimburse the state?
Would that come?
We have been, um, so thank you. I, I failed to put that in here and to mention that. We have been tracking our expenditures because, um, there is money available as a result of Juneau and then I think it was either Octavia or, I'm not sure which other one, uh, which name storm-
The two blizzards.
Yeah, that, that the governor, when he declared a state of emu, emergency, that opened up, um, the, the checkbook, if you will, to potentially get reimbursed. So we have been mindful and, and tracking that separately so we can put in for reimbursement.
So, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting.
The last meeting, yep.
I would still keep, uh, notes on everything beyond that because I think we should have a discussion maybe with the town manager about, uh, coordinating it, you know, getting those funds with the potential overage that's gonna happen with snow and ice removal.
Oh, absolutely. I know, um, Chief Burns, as, and I'm not sure what the title is for his, he's the head of our emergency response.
He's the emergency preparedness director for the-
Thank you. Um, so we've been working with him on, on the emergency, uh, on the tallying of the expenses and, and, and submittal for reimbursement.
Mrs. Webber?
So I just wanna clarify, so submitting for reimbursement, you're talking about for FEMA or other state programs, but, um, also, I mean, the town is gonna come back to town meeting at some point with the overage.
Yes, yeah, we're, we're tracking in totality, yes.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, and, and, and to clarify, any funds that we may or may not receive back from, from MIMA or FEMA, um, would go into the general fund. It wouldn't come back to us. It would go into the general fund, so certainly-
Oh, right, right.
Certainly there would be, um, you know, conversations to help offset or mitigate any, uh, any over. We, we do have an overtime budget for the, for the winter for just this. So, um, uh, Kelly and I are meeting on Friday. Uh, payroll will post tomorrow in Munis, so we'll have the latest round of, of overtime and we'll be able to sit down and kind of go through and identify, um, the dollars that we're spending and, and, and stay on top of it.
Yeah, what I was suggesting was any, anything extraordinary that could ultimately cause us to have to go to another part of the budget, which we don't wanna do.
It'll also be interesting to see what happens with our spring athletes, uh, in, in those, in the fields and I can, I can already envision the, um, uh, healthy debate going on in the field house for space when spring sports start up, so.
Yeah.
Good luck.
It starts in two weeks, I believe.
Yeah, so. But thank you very much for that.
I think, it's probably, maybe it's not appropriate. So that's gonna be definitely a challenge, especially for our track teams, I think, in the, you know, anybody that's on the roads.
I think those baseball players are gonna have a little bit of trouble too. I don't think that infield's gonna be clear.
I, I'm sorry, I've, there's been in the news a lot of issues with kids being in the road and I'm just was, uh, you know, obviously any of the sports that might typically be on sidewalks or the roadways, that's gonna be, the fields are, have three feet of snow on them. So unless they're snowshoeing as part of their sport, it's gonna be tricky.
There's, there's facility, I'm sorry.
No, please, no, that's all right.
You know, there's facilities that I guess potentially we might have to rent, uh, like a Rams or one of those indoor.
We usually, we usually deal with this the first couple of weeks of spring sports, so.
It's pretty typical. It's just gonna have to be extended a little bit. Just making some comments.
You know what I mean, Dr. Doherty? Just keeping it lively, really. Thank you, Martha.
Oh, I have more.
I know you want, yeah.
That's, that's just the first one.
Let's get to it.
Um, the next one is, um, this past Wednesday, uh, during vacation week, we successfully tested the emergency generator here at the high school, um, which was a coordinated effort because we, um, we didn't wanna just shut off the power and, and risk our, our, the hub, if you will, for all of our, um, technologies here at the high school, housed here at the high school. So we, um, shut down our servers and our head end room, um, appropriately and then did this, the generator test and then brought everything back up. Um, so that was, that happened last Wednesday. And then, um, this, as a lot happened on vacation week, as you can tell from my report. Um, we participated, we hosted the Reading Police Department, conducted training exercises at Wood End, um, last week, uh, Wood End Elementary School. And there were a number of administrators from the district that, um, either observed or participated. I participated, it was a lot of fun. Um, it was extremely helpful because as we continued to look for ways to improve our Alice training and our Alice drills, it was helpful to have a different vantage point on, on what the police response is going to look like. So it was, it was a very participatory exercise and, and we thanked the police department for allowing us to observe and participate in that. My last report was about the modular classroom, so I don't know if you want me to take you through that now or if you wanna address that later on in the meeting or?
Uh, could I ask if there are any other reports or any other-
Oh, sure, yeah.
Or any other questions on, Mr. Robinson?
I have a, a question on, on the, maybe it would wait until your Capitol presentation, but I noticed that, uh, coincidentally, we're putting off all of the roof projects.
I have notes for that for the Capitol.
Okay, we can wait.
Why don't we wait, if that's okay? Thank you very much.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it should be now or later. The question that I'm most frequently asked is, so how many days have we missed and are they just gonna be added on at the end or?
No one read my blog post then? Facebook blog, Twitter?
Sorry.
Did a whole-
We'll get the kids back.
I did a whole thing on that.
Wait, what an excellent segue. Dr. Doherty, do you wanna?
Hi, Ben.
We've used six snow days. It brings us to June twenty-fifth, um, which ironically is the same exact date we've gotten out of school the last two years. So right now, we're good. Um, if we have to look further, um, we, we still have a few days in June we can take a look at. Um, if we need to go longer than that, which I hope not, cause it means we're gonna have some serious issues. Um, you know, we could take a look at Good Friday, we could look at April Vacation. There are definitely things we can do, but I, I don't anticipate it this time.
What day is Good Friday?
What date is Good Friday?
It's Friday.
No.
It's late. I wanna say March, no, thirty? Yeah, so it's March twenty-seventh.
At this point in time, there's absolutely no change in our schedule.
No change, yeah.
Just, all the, uh, all of the students out there who think they know what's going on. The last day of school is June twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
At this point-
Yep.
Uh, we don't see any problems. Uh, seniors are psyched at this point, um, and they're, you know, a, as far as that world goes. Uh, if we do decide that we wanna have a conversation regarding the Good Friday day off, that's a school committee-
Absolutely.
-vote and we should probably add that to an agenda, just to have that discussion so it's, it's available, Dr. Doherty. But at this time, business as usual.
April third.
April third.
Thank you. I knew that, Mom, I knew that. Um, were there any other questions regarding the snow days? Andrea?
Well, like, I've heard, have you heard that a, a lot of students have been freaking out about April Vacation, like they're gonna take away April Vacation, so that's not-
So no, we are absolutely not taking April Vacation.
We don't need to do anything-
Yeah.
-right now. And, and until we have more snow days, then we can have that discussion.
I don't think other people-
I didn't get the name.
I know, well-
See, one of the, one of the things that- See, one of the, one of the things that, see, and I think they're listening to the media...
Yeah.
'Cause other districts started, started after Labor Day. So, they're in a much different crunch than we're in.
Okay.
Um, school districts that started before Labor Day don't have the same crunch.
And Boston is way worse.
So, yeah, and some, some districts took more than six snow days right now.
My daughter's district is up to June thirtieth right now.
Yeah.
Well, spread the word. We all have April Vacation right now.
They have to read my blog.
The reason why we have student representatives at these meetings is you guys are our voice in the hallways, right? So, you're gonna tell everyone, guys, chill.
I'll tweet it out.
Okay? Sounds good, thank you very much.
Your technology, good job.
So, so that we actually end this meeting at some point, we're gonna just keep this moving, right? Dr. Dory, for the, for the reports?
I do, I have a, I have a few.
I'm ready for it.
I don't, did you have something? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I knew I could trust you.
Um, I wanna first talk about, uh, we, there was some, as you know, there was some discussion about nine C cuts. And the cut that's gonna affect us the most this year, the, the, these cuts are for this year. FY fifteen is the, is the MECO reduction at the, uh, at the state level. Um, there was a cut made by Governor Patrick in November, um, and Governor Baker made an additional cut to the MECO budget, um, couple of week, uh, last couple of weeks ago. Um, the total reduction for Reading is gonna be twenty-seven thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars, which is a six percent cut, I believe.
I, I think so, pretty close to it.
Um, so, right now, we're in the process of figuring out what that means, and so, uh, we'll have a better indication on that. I mean, at this point, it's not gonna affect transportation, it's not gonna affect the program itself. Um, there'll be some, some things that will get reduced, maybe, um, like after-school transportation, things like that. But right now, you know, we're, we're in the process of figuring that out. But that will be the most, most likely, the biggest hit from the nine C cuts. I, I don't anticipate there'll be any other major hits, um, from any, from the current nine C cuts. Um, we, all of the MECO communities are, um, crafting a letter that we are sending to, uh, the governor so that he is aware, not for, not for this year, 'cause we know that it, the nine C cuts are probably irreversible, um, but for future budget consideration of, of the MECO program. Because this cut could be, it, it was about a million dollar cut, um, that's, could be the starting point for next year's FY sixteen budget, which is gonna be announced, um, I believe, next week...
Next week.
...by the governor, uh, his House One budget. So, so we are sending a letter to the governor of all the MECO communities on behalf of that.
Mrs. Webb?
It's our, our legislators all lined up with us on that?
Yes.
Brad, Jason, and Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Doctor.
Thank you.
Yeah, are there plans for us to bring a contingent from Reading to MECO Lobby Day again this year?
I, I honestly don't know the answer to that at this point.
Can I suggest it might be a good idea?
Director.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, this, this, this really gets, I mean, Patrick and Ba- I mean, this is their annual cut.
Right.
They go to MECO, it's the first thing they go to. Every year, we have this discussion. I mean, every year, we gotta go in, in there and, and ask for more money for transportation. Every single year, they do this.
Mr. Knight?
I was just a- actually curious as to how many MECO districts there are. I mean, I know of many, but I'm curious if you knew.
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
They're not, not important. I can look it up, but Google it.
It also includes, uh, it's not just Boston, it's Springfield also.
Yeah.
There's a Bo- not Boston MECO and a Springfield MECO.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Dory.
Um, I do have a couple more things. Uh, kindergarten registration, now that, that we know, um, the direction that we're gonna be heading for next year. So, uh, we're in the process right now of, of putting together kindergarten registrations, uh, parents, and, and we did send something out to parents this morning of the kindergarten families for next year. Uh, we'll be sending out their school assignments, um, and full day, half day assignments next week. So, they'll be getting those next week, and they're, they're aware that, that they'll be getting those. Um, I do wanna put in a plug, I know Martha already talked about it. I do wanna put in a plug and thank the Facilities Department and, and the Department of Public Works for the, the job that they did on the schools, on the schools of the shoveling and the plowing and removal of snow. Um, you can see these big snow mounds all over the place, but, you know, I, I was in constant contact with both DPW and Facilities on the days that we were trying to figure out if we were gonna have school the next day or not. And, um, you know, they, they were pretty straightforward. They did everything they could to try to have school. Um, but really, it came down to just sheer, sheer exhaustion and, and, you know, 'cause they, some of these, um, people were working twenty-five, thirty hours straight. Um, and it just was an impossible task to, to be able to stay up with storms. But they did a great job making sure that when school was open, that everything was safe and, and clear. So, I just wanna put out, uh, um, a, a kudos to them. Um, I also, uh, and I sent an email to you yesterday and, and it was announced to the Josh Wheaton community, uh, that Karen Feeney is gonna be resigning at the end of the year. Um, at the next school convening on the ninth, I will, uh, be giving you, um, the, the search process that we will be using with the, um, tentative dates for that process. Um, we'll be running it, like, the types of searches that, for principles that we've, we've run in the past. But, um, I'll have this, I'll send that out to the school committee for the March, March ninth meeting. And then, um, the last thing, tomorrow evening, um, and I did say this is the last school convening also, um, the Rotary Club of Reading, Ian North Reading, is gonna be hosting the Taste of Metro North right here in the fieldhouse. Um, the reason why I am publicizing, announcing this is that Rotary has been a very good friend to the Reading Public Schools and the Reading Education Foundation. They're very supportive every year in providing, um, resources to our schools. Um, the one most notably this year was the Early Literacy Project for our kindergarten first grade students with the book bags, and then went and read two students. They're actually gonna be doing that again over the next two weeks as part of Read Across America. So, um, you can buy tickets at the door, you can buy tickets online. Um, it's a great night, there's over twenty-eight restaurants that are gonna be there. Um, it's really a good evening, it's a great evening. And our chorus and band, uh, Jazz Ensemble are gonna be performing at it as well.
What time does it serve?
Uh, five-thirty to seven-thirty, thank you. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dory. Okay, there's so many choices we can go to now. Excellent. Um, is it... Okay, we could, um, why don't we go in order, I guess?
Sure.
Okay. So, the first thing under Continued Business is the kindergarten and elementary space needs discussion?
Okay.
Is that good?
Sure, that's fine.
See? It's a democracy.
Yeah, you go.
Sure.
So, um, I distributed earlier this evening the email and printed out copies for you all, uh, just a memo updating you on the modular classroom project. Um, as you all know, last night, the, the town meeting, um, the funds were appropriated to, uh, procure six modular classrooms. Um, so, over the next, uh, next week or so, we're very, very busy. Today, um, Kelly and I reviewed the final draft for the request for proposal, um, and the data was submitted to the central register. It's, it's a week waiting period, so it was submitted today, but it won't post until a week from now, uh, on March fourth. Um, we also had a conference call with Town Council this morning, and, uh, he's gonna review the draft and the draft contract so that everything is in line, ready to be distributed on, on March fourth. Um, March fourth, the RFP will be posted on the central register, it'll be advertised in the local paper, and it'll also be posted at Town Hall, um, and, uh, documents will be available to the public, um, to pick up. On March twelfth, we're gonna host a mandatory walkthrough with site visits at all three sites. So, any prospective bidder or vendor, um, will have to attend that meeting to walk through the properties and get a visual, visual. Um, in tandem with that, and I, I forgive me, I forgot my notes, so I'm speaking from memory on this, we have been working with PAR, um, for site, uh, survey, um, to identify where, where the best location is for them. And that information, along with plot, uh...
Plans.
Site plan.
Site plans, thank you. Site plans will be distributed to any vendors that come on the twelfth, uh, as well.
Excuse me, one more.
You said you were working with PAR? Who's PAR?
PAR is a local engineering firm.
It's an engineering firm.
Oh, an engineer.
Yeah.
They're, they're who we've contracted with to look at the retaining wall. So, we've used them for, uh, a couple of things in the past, and, and so they're familiar.
The town officials require much more detailed site plans from what we've been showing. And so, they've been working at that, which shows the location of, the exact location of utilities, um, things like that.
Thank you.
Um, on the nineteenth, March nineteenth, all sealed proposals are due back, uh, to central office by ten AM. So, from the nineteenth to the twenty-first, uh, we'll have a review of the proposals and, uh, and rank them based on our evaluation criteria. Um, to, the goal i- is to have, uh, the information to the school committee, um, well in advance of the March twenty, uh, actually, so I sent you an email.
No, that's okay. And so, uh, thank you, Martha.
I don't wanna go out of order.
Nope. Uh, our meeting for that week in March was scheduled earlier. Uh, we're gonna move our meeting to March twenty-sixth, which will give us more time. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, so we requested, uh, of the chair to, to move the March twenty-third meeting to the twenty-sixth, as you just heard. Um, that will give us time to get the proposals out to you all, so you can review them and, uh, ask any questions prior to the meeting, and then have a thoughtful discussion on the twenty-sixth. We'll make a recommendation to award the contract. Um, the goal is to have the contract executed with the, uh, preferred ven- vendor by the thirtieth. Um, that gives us a, a nineteen-week lead time, which is pretty close to what we need. You know, we, we've been told, um, that we need anywhere from eighteen to twenty weeks lead time, so we're, we're right in the middle of that with nineteen weeks. Um, we'll develop a project schedule, obviously. Um, the bid document does specify that they need to be ready for occupancy, meaning the building inspector has to deem them, you know, ready for use, um, no later than August fifteenth. And, uh, we will continue to work with town officials, um, so that we're following all appropriate code specifications and, um, and any permitting requirements. And all that language has been drafted into the RFP.
Great, thank you very much. Questions on that timeline? Mrs. Webb?
Um, I, I have a question on, um, so, the review of proposals, so the nineteenth to the twenty-first, and then, um, does that include, is that DECAM or is that not part of this? You know, so how do we, how do we, what information do we use from the state to assure that these contractors, proposed vendors are financially soluble and reliable and a little bit?
Um, this process is very much guided by the state and by Chapter one forty-nine, and there's actually a section, there's a subsection to Chapter one forty-nine specifically for modulators.
Okay.
Um, so that is our, our, our guiding light, if you will. And, um, and DECAM certification is one of the required forms for, um, vendor submission, so, um, there are a number of them, and that, and that is included in it.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Mr. Knight?
Chris, just checking on the...
Sure.
So, are we meeting the twenty-third and the twenty-sixth?
No, no.
Just the twenty-sixth.
Just the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Good answer, right?
All right.
Um...
Oh, okay.
As part of the evaluation committee, just to let the committee know, um, I've asked Mr. Robinson if he'd be willing to sit through those meetings and, and be, be our representative, and he's agreed. So, thank you.
Um, oh, on the, the tw- the nineteenth to the twenty-first, you mean?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
More questions on the calendar scheduling? No? Thank you very much.
Okay.
That was easy, right?
That might be next.
We are moving right along. I, do you wanna catch your breath or do you wanna keep going?
No, no, I'm good.
Great.
Let's keep going.
Great. A Capitol Plan update, please.
Hey, it's me again.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, um, the FY sixteen Capitol Plan, because we moved, um, a few things around, uh, both on the town and the, um, the school side, it was necessary to defer some, um, some projects into FY seventeen. Um, so, uh, again, Kelly Cologne and I, with the help of, um, the town manager, um, thoughtfully looked at it, and actually, these suggestions were, were actually from the town managers. So, it was, and we concurred with, with the recommendations. So, um, as Mr. Robinson pointed out earlier, alluded to earlier, a lot of these are rooftops. So, I'll, I'll go in order. Um, the rooftop at the Town Hall has reached its useful life, and the allocation of the FY sixteen, um, funds to begin that work was originally in the Capitol Plan. And while the roof has reached its useful life, we can defer replacement to FY seventeen with, with not too much concern, with the exception of the annex hallway. And that's the funds that stayed in FY sixteen. So, um, it's, the roof will be replaced in its entirety, but it'll be done in, um, in seconds. Um, we can use, if there is an urgent repair need, we could use, um, extraordinary funds to, to address any urgent needs if, if there, that came to be. So, um, we were very comfortable with, with splitting that project and move, deferring some of the money to FY seventeen. Um, so while the West Side Fire and Main Street rooftop repairs and replacement work was in the Capitol Plan for FY seventeen, and they have reached their useful life, the overall condition is still functioning, and moving that repair, replacement, um, to FY seventeen should not cause any significant issues with the integrity of the current with the integrity of the current roofing. But we do recommend that we do replace it in FY seventeen. So we wouldn't wanna push it out much further than that.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
So, may I, I'm just asking, I'm assuming the town manager thought that as we move things out, they, are we moving them out at the same cost? Because things go up when you, I mean...
Um, no, that's a very thoughtful question. I appreciate that. We, Kelly and I, um, Ms. Cologne and I are going to get together and look at the capital plan going out. This is a capital plan that, um, that was developed before we each started in our new roles. And, um, and so we have some, after her first full year here, she may have some thoughts of where, where more urgent need is. Um, and at that point, for the fall, we will update pricing appropriately for the, the projects that are out in the near term. Otherwise, looking out ten years, we can't really, you know, estimate reasonably. But, but to your point, a, a year or two out, we should probably adjust prices.
That'll be a full review, not just the changes?
Yeah, it'll be a full review.
Thank you. There was a third bullet?
There was.
The Main Street Fire Station?
Oh, that's, I talked about both of them together, the West Side and the Main Street.
Just wanted to make sure.
Nope, nope, thank you.
Excellent job. Mr. Robinson?
I'm sorry. Move to revise the FY two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-five capital plan as follows. Reduce the Town Hall roof repairs from two hundred thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars to the annex hallway portion only, and add the balance to the, of the, and add the balance to the three hundred thousand dollars requested in FY two thousand seventeen. Defer the West Side roof repairs to FY two thousand seventeen. Defer the Main Street Fire Station roof repairs to FY two thousand seventeen.
Second?
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? The motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under new business, uh, I've had some discussions, um, with Mr. Phil Vaccaro over the last few weeks regarding, uh, the varsity baseball field, the Morton Field, um, which is not under school committee, uh, school control. It's actually under control of the town. However, uh, Mr. Vaccaro is very interested in, uh, changing the name of Morton Field to include, um, uh, Mr. Peter Moscarello, who retired as head baseball coach and a longtime teacher at Reading. Uh, you'll find in your packet tonight the letter that I received from Mr. Vaccaro. What I was, what I would like to do this evening is to have a discussion on that, and hopefully, as a sign of support, to, uh, have a motion voting in favor of that request from Mr. Vaccaro. I could not agree with it more. I think that Mr. Moscarello was a, an excellent, outstanding, uh, teacher and coach who served Reading faithfully for many years. So, um, that's next on our agenda. Sorry for that long intro. Is there a discussion from the school committee at this time? Mrs. Web?
I have a question, and I fully support this, and Mr. Moscarello was actually my math teacher for Algebra II. And he was a very good teacher at that time. But I, I just, I don't know what the selectment's process is. I know that we've done a lot of work on our processes, and I think that, um, it's really important when you make a big decision like this that there's some really good, strong process behind it. So I'm really, you know, um, I feel comfortable with what we've done, some of the changes that we've made. Don't know what the selectment's process is, whether it's, you know, this is the letter and that suffices. I certainly, from, um, just the school committee, you know, member viewpoints, support this recognition. But their process is their process, so I can't really, I might not, I might not like it, or I might, or I, maybe I think it might need to be enriched, but it doesn't matter either way. So I think that I would certainly support it.
I appreciate that. I'm not aware of a selectman policy for the naming of buildings and facilities.
They don't have one.
And this is in no way any, meant to be any sort of directive, or, uh, this is simply a way of, the Reading School Committee saying, Board of Selectmen, if you're looking for our opinion, we think that this would be an excellent, uh, decision. However, in no way, uh, is this making a, a directive of the selectman. Is that fair?
No, I think, uh, it's fair, and I think, you know, we hear often about transparency and process. And I, you know, I know that we've worked hard to do that around this particular subject of naming.
Yes.
And probably some people might think that we spend too much time talking about it. But at any rate, I, I, so I think that whole transparency issue is really important. And, you know, the selectmen have whatever process they have or don't have. But, um, again, he has, Mr. Moscarello has made some fabulous contributions to the district over his career. I don't frankly know, um, that much about, who, I'm assuming it was Mr. Morton, not Mrs. Morton, who that field is named for.
Newton Morton, Newton Morton.
Okay. I, I don't personally, I think it was always Morton Field as long as I was here. So I don't know that much about the...
I think that's excellent. Uh, uh, hopefully, if, if the selectmen do change the field, it would also be a wonderful time to remind Reading who Newton Morton was and, and why we've named things after such wonderful people. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I, you know, I support, I, I like to peat and support this. Why, I guess I'm just curious, that, I assume the selectmen had, I mean, they've certainly been involved in our naming process. They don't have a committee, a subcommittee?
There, there's no set policy like the school committee has on the town side for naming.
That's why we have the West Side Fire Department. I mean, there's no originality there, Mr. Robinson. That was a joke.
Main Street.
I thought there was a real Mr. West.
I, I thought that until I realized Main Street Fire Station, so, um, is there a motion, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, there is.
Move to support Mr. Vaccaro's request to rename the varsity baseball field to, to Morton and Moscarello Field.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? The motion carries six-zero. If, if the school committee wishes, I will send both an email to Mr. Vaccaro and the chair of the selectmen, just letting them know. Okay, great. Thank you very much for that.
Move to accept the three hundred dollar donation from Arbella Insurance to the Joshua Eden School to be used to offset transportation costs for the grade four trip to the Boston Symphony.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six-zero.
Move to accept the five hundred dollar donation from Alliance Energy to the Joshua Eden School to be used in the areas of math and science.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I just have a question. So, you just got to thinking, I, Arbella, how do, do parents or PTO members?
It's probably, it's probably through a parent, is my guess.
Cause it was interesting, you know, that they would be making a donation to the symphony, an insurance company.
Oh, we had a second on that motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries six-zero. Mr. Robinson?
Uh, move to accept the donation, the amount of fourteen hundred dollars from the Friends of Reading Football to be used to support a coaching assistant position for the two thousand fourteen season.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is, is that the two thousand fifteen season, or is that a back payment?
No, this is, this is for the two thousand fourteen season. They're behind, and, and I would like to, if it's okay.
Certainly.
Mr. Tom Connery did come in to see me, and, um, there was a miscommunication. I, I, he wanted to be here this evening to, to be here for the donation. Um, I do believe he's gonna be on the agenda for another donation that's coming up, uh, at a future meeting. So he'll be here, and we can thank him then, um, for their support. But this is for the two thousand fourteen season, yes.
Thank you. Uh, was that seconded? Mrs. Engels and I, I apologize. Great. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries six-zero. Your hand was up there?
Sorry.
I saw it. Um, I don't think we're ready to approve...
The screening.
No. No, that'll happen on March ninth.
Move to approve the open session minutes dated February second, two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Discussion? Mrs. Doxer?
I just had suggested to Ms. Engels and, um, something that I would like added. Do I need to say what that was?
One of you.
On page two of the minutes, um, when I did my report, I intentionally included the fact that different teams were participating together as well as different generations, and so I just wanted that noted because the high school robotics team was coaching the Lego students, and also the science, the Coolidge Science Olympiad team was running the freshmen's. And I just think it's really noteworthy in our town that teams collaborate with one another. And so I just asked that that be added. And I also asked that, um, it be noted that the Human Relations Advisory Committee is looking for new members. And she said, okay.
Great.
Oh, not on the minutes. Let's approve the minutes.
Thank goodness. Um, all those, uh, uh, that approve the minutes as amended? The minutes were dated February second. We're still all raising. Are we all raising our hands? Awesome. Uh, Mrs. Web, I know we're all raising our hand.
I, I...
Yeah, okay. Six-zero. I got my eye on you down there.
All right. I'm distracted. No, um...
It's completely okay. Questions? Mrs. Web?
Yes, so I just was looking at the calendar, making sure that I changed March twenty-third to the twenty-sixth. And I noticed that March eleventh FY sixteen budget presentation to Finance Committee. So that's to Finance Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
That's also happens to be Junior Guidance Night here at the high school. And I think there's at least two of us on the committee who have, three, right, who have juniors.
Good thing your spouses can attend.
Some of them, it's, uh, some of them, it's their first juniors. So it's important. Like, some of us, we're old juniors, so I don't know. But anyway, it's important.
No, it is important. Obviously, if, if, if school committee members cannot make that meeting, we'll make sure.
Yeah, the Finance Committee requested that we move, it was the eighteenth, it was moved to the eleventh.
Oh, okay. So that wouldn't necessarily need to be the full committee, as many committee members as can attend that, correct?
It wouldn't necessarily have to be.
Okay.
It, it will be posted.
But I'll be there.
It will be posted.
No, I'll be at the FinCon meeting, even if I had a junior.
Do you, have they sent questions in the FinCon?
No, not received.
Dr. Doherty, do you have a, a location for that? Will it be at Town Hall?
That will be at Town Hall, yes.
So, uh, Mrs. Web, thank you for that, though. Our next school committee meeting is March ninth. After that, two days later on Wednesday, we'll have the FinCon presentation. We'll then meet the twenty-sixth, as Mrs. Web noted. And then April sixth, and then it's elections.
Smile.
Seeing no further business, does anyone wanna?
I'm doing here.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mrs. Web voted yes. Six-zero.